Good evening and welcome to the Proctor Select Board Meeting. If you'd all please join me for the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the United States of America and to the Republic for which stands one nation, united in the principle of liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. The first order, business is to review and approve the agenda. A motion would be in order.
Motion to approve.
Second.
Are there any changes, deletions, additions, anything? All right, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion passes unanimously. Approval of the July 22nd Select Board Meeting minutes, a motion would be in order.
So moved, second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion passes unanimously. Open public comment. John?
Yes. When are we doing it that potholes fill the new town?
Well, I think if you had just been up on Church and School Street, they filled in within the last week.
How about the rest of the town?
Well, I don't know, what are you speaking about specifically?
Well, Channel 4's got potholes there and they're two years, Channel 4 extension. I'll look at it, I could name it, I did almost every street and they're not getting any smaller, they're getting bigger. Alright? And also, I looked at the town equipment. Can we do some maintenance on the town equipment? You know, the rust, touch-up, the loader. I'm ashamed even look at the loader, which I took pictures of it. I mean, on any day, this is what they should be doing in the garage. And I just can't believe we spend our time mowing, that's what we do. We mow, 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 and you're mowing beyond the town right away.
Where is that happening, John? Wait, wait, no, I want to know because the last time we spoke about this and you came in and said we were mowing outside the town right away, you were incorrect and if you had been at the next meeting, you could have been corrected. So please tell me where we're mowing outside the town right away.
Go outside, go outside the property, the old room three.
That's very incorrect, so we already went through that at a meeting that you missed, that's town property. What's the second piece?
Down by the cover fresh. You should take better care around that marble stone than you do between the road and that.
The what?
Down there with the playground. I think it's some trail or something.
Oh. Well, either you want us to take care of property that doesn't belong to us?
It belongs to the town.
Uh, it's a historical marker, I don't believe they do belong to the town necessarily.
Right on top of it.
Alright.
I'm not here to argue, but I'm just saying.
Well.
It's get, it's get, the infrastructure fall apart this time.
I don't have potholes on my street. And I do feel like, John, when you come, that that's your goal, to come into attack. That town employees, what we're doing here, if these issues are incredibly pertinent, you can always come and see Judy. You can always speak to Kyle and say.
I haven't called Judy in over nine.
And have you spoken with Kyle about potholes up in your neighborhood?
Yeah.
You've spoken to Kyle?
Right on the corner. Right on the corner, going up Park Street, Channel 4 extension, Channel 4.
Have you, have you?
Two years.
Have you spoke to Kyle about that, I ask you, John? No? Okay.
John, you've only spoken to me twice, usually you call and I'm not there, so you leave a voicemail. And when you come in here and I address you, you won't even speak to me. You totally ignore me, so don't even go there.
I have nothing to say to you.
Exactly, so why are you saying, oh, I talked to you?
Why are you here?
Okay, moving on. Uh, Butch?
Thank you, Madam Chair. So, I apologize, we're coming over a couple of weeks ago, we had the house fire in Pittsburgh, it was a salt. We should kind of down, but it's not, it's not current, as I, but as I did as a priority of fifteen years of service in the legislature. Representative Harry's towns, his secretary Brandon, Pittsburgh and Proctor. The latest iteration of Proctor was really good fun representing you folks. And, and I'm still wrapped until the first Wednesday after the first Tuesday in January, about ten o'clock. That will be this morning. And, and I, and I will certainly represent you folks to the best my ability until, until that time, probably after this too. Because I bring in me tonight, Alicia Malley, who has agreed after much pejoling from me to run from my seat in the legislature. And Alicia, Mary Ann Oll, is, is a current chair of the Pittsburgh Select Board. She's a library trustee, she's a member of the historical society, and all kinds of super, but let's add. So Alicia, I want to turn this over to Alicia so she can introduce herself to you. And I, I do listen with great confidence that she'll represent Proctor in the best way that she can.
Great.
Hi, so Alicia Malley. Yeah, I've been, I've been on the Select Board, I don't know, I think seven or eight years, as well as many other boards in town. And I guess this was just the next step, which told me he was going to be retiring. So I do look forward to serving Pittsburgh and Proctor.
Great. Thank you. Any questions, comments?
Well, I'm on board.
I know, we'll save it. Hopefully.
Also, the board will support her in any way that you can reasonably support her. I understand the politics. Sure.
Great.
Thank you.
Thank you, nice to meet you.
Yeah.
Enjoy your retirement.
Don't start it too far.
Alright, open public comment or good stuff? Any good stuff?
Um, trying to think of the concerts that we've had, they have been, well, a lot of it's going to be in my report later. My manager's report about the things going on around town. But we've had a huge turnout from the last concert we had last weekend, or last week. So our next one is next Wednesday, and the final one is September 4th. So that'll be our final concert for the year. The pool closes on Friday and summer camp is ending Friday as well, so.
Involve Festival is upcoming, September 28th, so it hasn't happened, but I guarantee it'll be good stuff.
Yes, yes. Fireworks and all.
Yeah. Very, good deal. Alright, the bells went around, did everybody have a chance to sign?
Yes.
Okay, great. And next we have Devin to explain the Act 250 exemptions.
Thank you all. Devin here, I'm the Executive Director of Rutland Regional Planning Commission. Know most of you up here, but for those, for those that I don't, nice to meet you in person. So why am I here? Well, a lot of you probably heard of H 687 during the session, which was the Act 250 reform bill. It did pass and it's known as Act 181. Lot of numbers, very confusing, why they're not the same, first to tell you. So, um, that means some major implications for some of our medium-sized towns like Proctor. And this law is intended to grow housing, reduce Act 250 barriers in places where we want to grow. Proctor is a place that could handle growth potentially based on having water and sewer, zoning, and not subdivision regs. So that is one of the several components that municipalities need to access the Act 250 exemption. Those exemptions aren't actually going to be into effect until January 1st, 2027. But there's several interim housing exemptions to Act 250. So what that looks like is those places that have village center designations like Proctor. There's a, there's potential right now, if you have the few criteria, so those are water, wastewater, or adequate soils for wastewater, zoning, and subdivision regulations. Proctor currently doesn't have subdivision regulations, so you will miss out on this interim exemption and potentially the permanent exemption. That's not a problem, if you're interested, the RRPC can work with the Planning Commission to draft subdivision regulations. The state of Vermont is really placing a huge priority on updating your zoning to be much more flexible and to encourage subdivision regulations. So they are investing in grant programs that'll be available. Unfortunately, it's usually now, through the municipal planning grant and the bylaw modernization grant. However, due to some logistical issues at the state, those are delayed until December or January. However, it's still easily accessed money with potentially no match if you pass bylaws that meet their sort of standard, right? And if you don't, or you don't happen to pass bylaws at all, you have a 10% match, so not a huge, huge deal. These typically range, you know, in the $6,000 to $10,000 range for us to be able to do this work for the town. And we'd work directly with the Planning Commission. That's not to say the Planning Commission couldn't, under a mandate from you all, start this process earlier. However, we currently don't have capacity to support something until a little bit later on. We're working on about four or five town plans right now, four or five sets of zoning bylaws, so we're kind of at capacity. However, we do understand time is of the essence. Sure, no housing developers are lining up yet saying like, we want to build in Rutland County. However, the, this is one potential major step towards getting us there. And, you know, right now, we are working on an update to the regional plan. Hopefully you saw a ton of our outreach last, last, um, this past spring. And we'll have another huge engagement period starting in September, where we're going to start to like, release some of our draft policies. But as part of that, you know, we're really looking to sort of update our future land use maps and look at places where we can grow, and grow housing especially. Because as part of our, as part of our regional plan, we're being tasked by the legislature to disaggregate the state housing needs target. So the state is going to produce a target saying we need X number of housing units by 2050. Rutland County is this number of those units. And then it'll be up to us to work with you all on disaggregating that regional target into town-based targets. Now, obviously, you know, we have done regional housing needs assessments and it puts that target on the 2040 scale, somewhere between 3,000 and 7,000 units. At, right now, our current housing deficit is for every ele, one unit created, we need 11 units. So we're currently at the largest housing deficit in the state of Vermont, Rutland County. All this to being said is really like, how can we position towns that are, who are willing and want to grow or have that potential to access these exemptions, right? And the interim housing ex, or exemptions for Act 250 just relate to housing. However, the permanent exemptions will, will be for all of Act 250. If the town can demonstrate that ability to sort of take that on. There's a couple different tiers and it's a little bit complicated, so I won't get into like, all of the bill, but I have some literature to leave with you all. There's four tiers. Tier 1A is basically completely Act 250 exempt in those areas. But you have to prove that you have basically functionally equivalent land use regulations to take, to take that on. Including the capacity to manage, you know, zoning and building permits, which you already do now. All the way to tier three, which are being coined as critical resource areas, where basically like, no development's going to happen. It's more conservation areas, and these will be like, you know, critical natural resources, you know, at high elevations or in critical sort of forest blocks. We don't know where those will, will be yet, but Proctor obviously is a well-developed area. You know, I don't expect there will be critical natural resources in your village by any means, right? So that's to be said, you know, the, the development needs to happen in a way that isn't done in any flood plains. And as you probably heard from this last session, there's also something called the Flood Safety Act. And that established a statewide river corridor rule. Now, in Proctor, you already have river corridors, so it'd be the exact same thing. You know, you need, you need special permission to basically build in the river corridor or not at all. So that won't change. So, long story is, I'm trying to visit with all of the municipalities that are just missing that one little piece to access these interim exemptions and to find out, are you interested in pursuing this? And how can we help you? So that's why I'm here tonight. If you're interested, we have a bit of time, like I said, these grants aren't going to be available until early winter, most likely. And if they're earlier, we'll certainly notify you. And we are able to help you apply and administer that grant as well. So happy to answer any questions, that was kind of a quick dump, but, uh, you know, it's, it is a complicated bill and I'll, I'll share these resources with you.
Questions?
Yes, I wonder about town mapping. How do we identify, you know, what property is a candidate for development?
So, I mean, you've already done this, right? So you have zoning now, so you've already mapped out like, what is the highest and best use of certain parcels, right? And you have a future land use map, a town future land use map. So you've already done this work, really. Now, if you're getting on a parcel level of like, where should we put this house or that house? That's a little bit more nuanced and likely, you know, that hopefully would, would be done by a developer interested in private housing development, right? The biggest thing is to make sure that when we do our future land use map for the region, that you all feel comfortable with it, that it, you know, aligns well with the regional needs and the town needs as well. Now, we already have a regional future land use map, right? So why do we need a new one? Well, unfortunately, our regional future land use map has very soft lines and that was done intentionally decades ago. And it doesn't give us the definition we need to basically say definitively, you are Act 250 jurisdictional or not, right? So this is going to have a little bit more weight to it and more definition than our old maps. I don't expect it to change substantively. You know, we already have Proctor and West Rutland and Rutland City and all the places that have village centers and downtowns, they're mapped as the places where we want to grow. You know, it's those other areas that we need to refine as well, so. I don't, I don't think the revision to that future land use map is going to be significant in terms of substance, but there will be definition change. And that is because the legislature found that there is too much variation between each region's future land use map. You know, ours looks a lot different than in northwestern Vermont or in Bennington County. So this is an attempt to make them all standardized. You know, they're still unique to the region, but they all look and act the same. So that's, that's the idea with these future land use map updates. If that answers the question. Yes, thank you.
So what would subdivision look, you're talking about town, village, we're in the town, village, downtown designation. What would subdivision look like in this particular area? I mean, when we look around, what will we be subdividing to build?
You know.
We've built on anything that isn't in the flood plain or isn't forest here.
Right, you're going to be probably more like, in till development, if anything. And for subdivision regs, yours would look like every other town's your size, like Fair Havens or, well, Fair Havens actually doesn't have that example. Polkneads or West Rutlands.
So what does it look like in terms like, so when you say subdivision, I think like Rutland Town has subdivision, right? But you have to have, what, 10 acres or?
They also don't have zoning, they're, they're unique.
Right. So we have specific lot sizes depending on the area that you're in. Are we saying all of that is going to go out the window?
No, this will be a supplement to your zoning, so you don't have to have zoning. To be perfectly frank, it's a bit of checking a box in this case for a town like you.
Okay.
However, it's required, so you gotta do it to get it. So I think if nothing else, it's that. And if you look beyond that, you know, it does give you some land use regulation over areas that are outside the village. You know, that could potentially be subdivided. So I won't say it's completely useless because it never is.
No, but I, I just don't want us to look like all of a sudden now, you know, we're.
I don't expect it to change.
You know, like city, so we're right on top of each other because I've subdivided my property and I have enough to put in, you know.
And that's the whole point. Lisa, you can customize these to be what you want. And I, I assure you, we have really good templates out there that, that same point. Pittsburgh has subdivision regs, right? But we don't know where your advantage is from. Right, alright. So there are, what I'm saying is there are good examples, Brandon has them, you know, Rutland City, those other areas. So I think you, we could develop something that you all feel appropriately models what you want.
So kind of in anticipation of this, we have tasked our Planning Commission with starting to review zoning regulations. So they've, they've started to take that on just themselves, kind of doing the read-through, looking at areas that they think perhaps have been problematic, things that need to be, you know, rewritten, taken out, whatever that is. So they're collectively doing that as the commission. But I, I do think, as, you know, like you said, whether you use it or not, it checks a box. It's going to be something that's going to aid us if, you know, we want to look for different grants and things like that, that we certainly should get on the list of having your help and then, um.
And we have kind of covered all that already, like when you and I met.
Yes, yeah, I was just talking with Judy a little bit about this.
And they're also aware of it, the Planning Commission is, they know that the subdivision piece has to go in there.
Sure.
And that's where they're definitely looking for help, but like Devin said, there's also templates that they can kind of start the ball rolling until you have the time to come freely.
And theoretically, this grant could help, you know, if they get to a certain point with the bylaws and they're like, okay, we've done everything we can do, we'd like some more help. We could do both the subdivision regs and the bylaws at the same time, under this grant. You know, that's really what it's intended to do. And there is some new provisions out of this bill, just like the Home Act last year, that require some changes to zoning. So it's always a good time to break it open and tinker and see what's working, what's not. So I, I commend you guys on having that sort of proactive approach to it.
Okay, yeah, I definitely think we should be on your schedule and applying for the grant to assist when that grant opens, December, January, for zoning bylaws to, to assist in the total, you know, rewrite, update, whatever that is, and, and to put this into the, into it, so.
Lisa, can I tag on a?
Sure.
Devin, so just a little bit, the, it's important to have this planning piece going, it's a really super complicated bill.
200 pages. 200 pages if you're looking for some light reading.
200 pages that we had an hour before we voted. And it's, it's very complicated, the mapping is critical, purposes of those three dense population levels. Areas like yours that has water, sewer, public transportation, walkability, and those type of things. So that was one of the purposes, and that was Tier 1A.
Tier 1A, I think Proctor would most likely be a Tier 1B, which is just the.
Different tiers.
It's really like downtowns and village centers are those tiers.
Whereas you're pretty dense, outside areas, with Proctor Road and, with Hall Road and those areas or not, it would be potentially in a different tier, which if you subdivided some of that, ring corner, Act 250 intervention. Downtown here, Proctor in beyond ring corner, Act 250 intervention, because you have the tools in place to do that, to, to meet the various goals, catching them off the top.
You're absolutely right so far, yeah.
So it's, it's important to, I think it's important for you to get the mapping done.
Sure.
And you'll, you'll know then what tier your various areas of town in, and then you can adjust your zoning to meet whatever criteria is needed.
Yeah, and I, looking at your zoning map now, it's pretty much that already, you know? And one thing I'll add on to what Butch said was, yes, in tier two, they will be Act 250 jurisdictional. However, they're calling it Act 250 Lite, where you're building a single-family home and it's not a critical resource area, it's probably not going to be nearly the lift that if you're putting in a, you know, industrial plant or something like that.
And you have subdivision.
Well, we have yet to see that, so do not quote me when it comes to 2027. So there is a lot of work to be done. The Natural Resource Board is going away, it's going to be the Land Use Resource Board, it's going to be paid positions. There's so much to this, but Butch is right. That future land use map for the region is huge, it's where everything kind of pins on it. And we have a really committed strategy, starting after the new year, to work with all of our towns to make sure it's done right in, in an open, transparent way. So that is sort of on a parallel track to our regional plan update. We have to have all of this stuff come together seamlessly by June of 2026. That's when we have to adopt this regional plan. So it is, I mean, our entire staff is working on this. I mean, last year, end of this year, they're going to probably be spending hundreds of hours each on this update and, and work. So we were trying to get it right because we want to do it once, but, um, yeah. So thank you for your time, really good to see you all. I'll leave these with you. And certainly, I'll be in touch with Judy.
Great.
With everything.
Thank you, Devin.
Yes, thank you.
Thank you.
See you.
Alright, Highway Paving Award was sent out and the paving update is September.
Yep, that's who's looking at September to start.
Okay, and Lisa's on, does she want to talk about?
Albert has a question.
Oh, sorry, Albert.
No, 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 not, I was just going to say, you know, because we're going to be milling and paving on Main Street and there's a bus stop there, you know, I don't know if you want to reach out to the bus or if you want me just to let them know that we are doing, you know, street milling and paving and that, you know, it may impact a little bit, just slightly, just that one.
And we'll try to get the word out anyway to everybody before then, before the start date, yeah.
And the bus will be on that list.
Yeah, and I'm, I'm waiting for like, more definite date than he, so.
Okay.
But thank you for bringing this.
Alright, and the agreement with Catalyst for software professional services for reappraisal? That contract just needs signatures?
Correct.
Okay, so we'll pass that around. And then Lisa's on for her assessor's FY25 contract and the information was in your packet. So Lisa, if you want to go ahead and provide an overview?
And I just want to say, I think what happened, I think Lisa had drafted this and then it came along with Catalyst, ProVal, the reappraisal, all that stuff together, so her contract wasn't approved and it should be, so.
Yeah.
We pulled it for this meeting, so we could get it done.
Okay.
Okay, Lisa, floor is yours.
Can you all hear me?
Yes.
Okay. Jimmy wasn't sure the audio was going to cooperate. Yes, it's, it's a simple annual contract, nothing is changed with any of the terms, except my hourly rate. As you know, expenses keep going up and so my rate has to go up commensurately. I have toyed with the idea over the years of doing a set fee, but I, it, it just doesn't feel right to me where I tend to try to work as lean as I possibly can and only work the hours that you really need me in your town. And also by doing that, I feel like, both sides feel like they're being treated fairly. I bill for the hours I put in, I, if I don't come in in a week because there isn't much to do or another town needs my attention, you don't get billed for those hours. And I feel like somebody feels a little bit short in one way or the other if you go with a, a set fee. Also, the reason we've done that over the years is when I first started here, we had an assistant assessor or assessor clerk, I guess is what the state tells us, we have to call that, that person, who does as much of the work as they possibly can, leaving the more complicated appraisal work for me to do. And that saves the town a lot of money, it has saved the town a lot of money over the years. So currently, our assessor clerk has arguably more experience than the original one who came on board with me back in 2017, and she's making significantly less than he was. So I, I just have to make a pitch for her in my interest as well as the towns. If we lose Karen and there are other towns who would like her, Chittman being one likely candidate, and Pro, Pittsburgh and Puplat are already paying her a more, a more fair wage for her experience. I think it's still lower than her value. You know, I, I think you have to consider that and we had budgeted for that and that's the reason this contract was drafted back in November. When we were going through budgeting, I tried to give the towns a heads up. But of course, you can't. But of course, you can't approve it then, but you've got to put it in your, your budget. So um, big picture, we're gonna have a fair amount of work to do uh with the conversion and the reappraisal. And if those of you who've been through it, um, know that it's not all on the appraisal contractor. If you don't have your assessing office supervising that and being directly involved in it, um, you, you won't get as um satisfactory a result. And you won't be able to maintain it. So, so that's pretty important too. So kind of big picture here. Um, we need all of these resources. And just for the record, Catalyst is spelled C.A.T.A.L.I.S. It was incorrect in the, the minutes. We have the same mistake on our ballot agenda. I need to fix it. I don't want to insult our contractors by getting their names wrong.
I'm sorry I spelled it wrong. Um, Lisa, why don't you provide, why don't, why don't you provide to Judy the um range of hourly wage or hourly rate that Karen's receiving in other communities? And then we'll have that when we do our budgets here in the fall, just as a.
Absolutely. But we put in for the same, yeah, we put in for the same budget amount that we put in for um, for Pittsburgh and for Pollin, and they have both approved that. So they are both even at thirty-two uh an hour for her as a town employee. Um, which is a little different than a private contractor, but it's not like you're paying her benefits. Uh, Pittsburgh does give her some nominal benefits, like summer vacation time for a one-day-a-week employee. That's, that's pretty generous. So, and I'm not saying you necessarily have to compete with that, but I think the hourly rate, um, to bring it up a bit. Karen has like ten years of experience as, as a, as a Lister, former Lister and assessor clerk, so.
Yeah, if you could just provide that to Judy and then we'll have that as we're looking at budgets here in the fall.
So was that, was that, was that not approved for this last year?
She got a, uh, she did get an increase this year. I could check with.
What was approved in the budget? Because that's what we put in for back in the fall.
I think she was getting thirty-two already. And she got a three percent on that.
Oh, okay.
No, no, she's not. She is not in Proctor. No, no, she's making twenty-seven? Oh, I wrote it down somewhere here this morning. Um, had been too many onions in the fire today, just coming back from uh vacation. Um, but I believe it's twenty-seven. It's, it's not in the thirties, no.
Alright, I'll check with her tomorrow then.
That would be um, yeah, she won't be in, not Karen, you mean Celia or?
Yeah, Celia. She won't be here either because of voting. But I'll be with her, so.
Yeah.
Okay, we'll look into that then.
Yeah, I'd like to get it resolved. It's, it's kind of critical for my office and, and quite frankly, every hour Karen can do, I don't have to do, and that saves you like sixty dollars an hour. So the math is, the math is pretty simple here.
Okay. Any questions for Lisa?
Yes.
Uh huh.
Page three, Lisa, it says a total forty-six days at a rate of four hundred thirty-five a day and has a total of twenty-six thousand two twenty. Well, that's uh twenty thousand ten dollars. But that daily rate of four thirty-five, on the previous page, it says it's five hundred seventy. And if you use the five seventy, you'd probably come up with that twenty-six two twenty. I know the number I would choose, but this is your uh proposal, so I'll let you pick the number that you want to use there for the daily rate.
Right, well, so, so one is an estimate without an assistant assessor and one is an estimate with an ass, with an assessor, an, an assistant in my office. So that's, that's the difference. That's the savings that you are likely to realize. And we could probably look at the numbers of the last, I think Karen's been with Proctor for two years now, maybe three. I kind of lose track of time. I think she's been in Pittsburgh for two now.
I think you're discussing a difference.
We could look at my annual, what, what I know annually, because it does vary with the amount of work. And um, I think we've usually been a bit under this in Proctor.
What page are you on?
And that may change a little bit during the reappraisal, but um.
I think you're discussing a different item.
Does that answer the question?
Oh, no, on page three, uh, just above town obligations, it says total forty-six days as above at a rate of four hundred thirty-five a day. And then it's got a total after it. Well, if you multiply forty-six times four thirty-five, you come up with twenty thousand ten dollars. That total is twenty-six thousand two hundred twenty dollars.
I see what you're saying.
That four hundred thirty-five, I think, is wrong. I think, because on the previous page, you say the rate should be five hundred seventy a day. If you look on page two of four, the bottom page, the bu- last sentence, it says five hundred seventy per day. So I think that four thirty-five per day on sheet three should be five hundred seventy. Then your total will be correct.
Gotcha. Sorry about that. Yep, that was probably a oil and plating error from the previous year.
Yeah, she just didn't delete that one.
Good question. And my only other question is, you know, because on the contract, it talks about clerical duties. Now, that would be the assistant assessor slash?
Yes, clerk.
Clerk, okay. That's all I have.
Yes. Anything else?
Lisa, we can make that correction here if you're okay with that and sign off on it and then I'll send it to you.
If you're okay with that, yes, yes. Uh, I apologize for that error, yes. But we're really hoping that we keep Karen and it's the lower number that you're hopefully approving for the um, you know, four days among the, three hours a day.
Alright, any further questions? Hearing that, a motion will be in order to approve and sign the contract.
Promoted.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye, aye.
Any opposed? Motion passes unanimously. Alright, thank you, Lisa.
Thanks, Lisa.
You had a great night, folks.
You too.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Alright, next we have the Vermont, Vermont State revolving fund loan agreement, and that needs board approval.
That is for the um line inventory, the grant agreement that we got with them. That's a grant that pays everything a hundred percent. So it actually, this went through the state, the state finalized it, so now we need approval on that. They're still in the process of doing that inventory. They're not getting much feedback from the town of Proctor. Um, people are not participating in the survey and giving them information, so they're gonna have to do a follow-up and go door to door. So.
Um, okay. But that, that's not changing. I mean, the grant's covering.
The grant's covered, yeah. It's just they need that data.
Okay.
So that's just kind of a pitch out there to, if you see people, to tell them that. They really should. I mean, it's not any harm. Most people I talk to say, you know, oh, I've got copper, I'm fine. So all I have to do is send a picture, just call them and let them know. They'll come in and take a picture for you, so.
Yeah, I think door to door is going to be a harder sell for them.
It's the only alternative.
Yeah. It just, yeah. So what, because the last time I thought we talked, we were getting okay feedback that people were responding and now it's just not, where we're at, it's not what we think it should be?
Yeah, they were getting something, but nothing major, you know? They just realized what the numbers we have and what they've gotten for information, it doesn't.
Is the information on the website or the QR codes or people have thrown that paperwork away?
Um.
They can still access that?
At one point, I don't know if it is. I don't know. We have the flyers here too, that they can come in and get it.
Okay.
I think it's just a lot of people just threw it away.
Yeah, let me take some flyers for the library, so. Okay. Alright, a motion would be in order to approve um, to sign the grant agreement.
Motion to sign the agreement.
Second?
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion passes unanimously. Okay. Um, grounds maintenance ordinance. We haven't really, I don't know, did people, I, I forgot to bring mine to mind, I apologize. This is an awful month for me. Um, do people, but if you brought it and you have suggestions, I'm happy to talk about them.
Well, no, the only, I brought it, you know, the last meeting, we had the discussion and, and there was only one area that I thought should be gender neutral. That was.
Okay. So that's really the only change that?
Well, we talked about some stuff. I talked about um changing the section four B, adding um roadways, trees, grass, bushes growing on sidewalks, um, open fields being mowed once, you know?
So for the, for the next meeting, should we do like I did for Beaver Pond, just take the document, put strikeouts? And in red, I'll put changes and provide that to you for the next meeting?
That worked well the last time you did it, with the last ordinance.
And in the interim, if people have ideas, just email me.
Yeah.
And then I could send them to you so that we're not wasting another week. We, we've got comments and ideas and.
Yeah. So I'll, I'll update, you'll send it to me?
Yes.
And make changes. And we're in August. Can we do it for the September meeting? The last week of August is like, I've got the back-to-school barbecue and my kid's going to college. So can we do it for the first meeting in September?
It's fine by me.
Okay.
Uh huh, thank you.
Alright, and we already kind of talked about it with Devin, the planning commission has been tasked with updating zoning regulations. Um, if you want to attend a planning commission meeting, if you have specific ideas or concerns about zoning regulations, you can share that with them or share with Judy. Um, I don't think they're very far along. I mean, last meeting was the first meeting, they kind of just had.
Right.
An initial conversation, just reading through and just kind of getting an overview. But um, I think if you have anything specific about the zoning regulations that you'd like to see earlier rather than later, would probably be better to get to them.
I think there's a lot that can be stricken and a lot that needs to be clarified. You know, it's kind of like you read a lot of the regulations and it's very unclear. You have to go to another page to figure out what's actually, you know.
Sure.
The rules are and stuff. So I think it just needs to be more in layman's terms so people can, you know, and then kind of a sheet saying, you know, like almost easy things, like what does require a permit? And if so, then what's the cost and things like that? Because there's a lot of questions and, and things like that. So I, my concern is just having people treated fairly. If one does one thing, the other does it, they're, it's treated the exact same way, so.
Sure. Okay.
And I don't want them getting hung up on the subdivision piece right now, so.
Well, I don't want to say that's a piece to be hung up on. It sounds like to me that's more of a piece that is going to come from Rutland Regional and you're just going to insert in the document.
Right, or, or they have templates that we can go by too.
Right.
Which I'd like to start doing, at least getting it molded.
Yeah, that's what I mean. It's not like, the planning commission isn't gonna write this piece. There's no reason to recreate the.
Right.
There's, there's already.
They can focus on everything that's in here already.
Yeah, I think maybe, and even like sometimes the easiest is like, what is your director first? Maybe the first pieces you read through and you mark everything that you think needs to be removed.
Right, right.
And then have a discussion about that. If you're removing it, if you're not removing it. And then the second pieces, maybe you go through and you decide like, you know, things that are, I don't know, some things are worded awkwardly.
Right. And things that need to be updated that, you know, something that was in effect ten years ago is in effect now. You know, things have changed, you know?
Right. I mean, it was written when you thought you were going to have all kinds of industrial kind of use going on. And it needs to be a little more focused, I think, around, you know, residential and um, you know, probably more small business. That, and the small business piece of it is kind of just like, oh, if you, you know, you're gonna have a home sewing business or something like that. They're a little, um, I don't know, nineteen sixties.
Right, right.
Are there printed copies of the regulations downstairs?
Uh, no, but we could get you a copy.
Yeah, you know, that's possible.
I don't know if they have them down. I have co- I can print you copies because I have, I have a book of all the ordinances that we've been working on just so I can make a copy for you.
Okay.
Like, do you want me to email it to you or just make you a hard copy?
Well, I can't print it out, so, so I would need the printed copy.
Okay.
So why don't you make, do you want one, Linda?
Yeah, I just want to have one.
Okay, so I would just make one for everybody. We'll put it in binders.
Okay.
So that way it's easier.
We're not gonna be that fancy.
Well, I can put them in.
It's only, it's not that many pages.
Well, just as you go through it though, you keep using the same document as you work on it, I think. So I can take him and punch him. I have a bunch of binders at the library.
Okay. I can punch him, I can just go in binders.
Well, I can drop off binders, whatever's easier. That way it's easier to um, um, you know, just keep working from the same document, so. Yeah, okay. Alright, a motion would be in order at six forty-six to go into the Board of Water Commissioners.
Promoted, second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion passes unanimously. Um, I didn't really see we have anything here. Um, how are the, I know we'll talk about this, but um, letters, agreements, any?
Um, they're pretty much been kind of flat. The ones who have agreements have been coming in. There's a couple who have said that they're coming in. I haven't seen them yet.
Okay.
So I was getting to the end of last month, so they're printing me a new report for updated ones now. So this is like the next section. Um, we also um, under the water, we're doing the, I mentioned it, I think, last meeting, the next week, doing hydrant flushing.
Yeah, August nineteenth, I think it's set.
So that's gonna be announced in the paper and then I'll also post it.
Okay. Yeah, I think we really have to get a handle. I mean, because now we're into this year, everybody just received, so. Um, people don't get any more behind, so it doesn't become more of a hardship for them.
It, it's hard because there's a lot of people who had agreements and then they paid that one payment. So then it's like you send another letter, you know, and it's like.
We're gonna be in October here and we won't be able to do anything, so. Alrighty, uh, motion would be in order to lead the Board of Water Commissioners and into, yes.
Take up your nine chan of power. Has anybody looked at the backside of it? I wish that somebody would look at the backside.
We will look at that before the next meeting. And have photos. Um, alright, uh, six forty-nine, move out of water and into the sewer commissioners.
Mm-hmm.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Ready to go.
Alright, so the Public Works is gonna be working on um jetting the sewers. And then they are also continuing to work with um real water on the guidance prep to prevent sewage spills. That's something that's kind of been ongoing and they're meeting up with them again to kind of finalize that piece of it. And um, it's, might be in my manager's report, but um Aldrich and Elliot are in the um final drafting stages of the design for the wastewater treatment plant.
And when we've had all these storms and big rain, have we had any alarms at park stage?
Um, no, they actually been really proactive in going out and cleaning all the culverts and the drains ahead of time. And then if it rains like late at night, they'll come back and they keep on doing it. Just, and they found that by continuously doing it throughout the day and night, it stops the overflows and the flooding and stuff like that, so.
Right.
Yeah, sounds good. Alright, any questions? Alright, we'll move out of sewer commissioners at six fifty and into the regular select board meeting. Sheriff's report. You have that in your packet. Any questions? We'll have the sheriff in town at the beginning, the first day of school, which is Wednesday. Um, thank you to the guys for the crosswalks. Those look great. A lot of people already mentioned that, so. Um, that's making it look a little more real.
Right, right.
Brashly peanut crosswalks means we're going back soon. Yeah, I think it would be great if um they could be around. And in the morning, maybe it's not as much, but in the afternoon for dismissal, you know?
Right.
First, I mean, every, they, everybody drives in the morning. First, I mean, every, they, everybody drives in the morning. It's in the afternoon when kids are walking. So, um, you know, just particularly like, you know, at Grove or even the crosswalk there at the library or Five Corners.
So you'd rather have them in the morning than?
I'd rather have them in the afternoon.
I mean, the afternoon because they're coming out. Okay.
Yeah, and we will have our, um, um, security person who's an officer also kind of be going around to all the schools in the morning, the first day. So, but I think it's just getting people back into that. There's going to be a lot more kids out.
Right. So is that something the school does? Contracts to get the sheriffs there? Or just in general, make sure that.
We, we have a deputy that works for the school. So he'll be going around to the school. But I think our responsibility should be for the, just the town in general, if we could ask to have the sheriff that we're contracting with kind of be out and about in the afternoon.
Right, okay. All right. I'll touch base with them. It's really hard, like lately they've been so sporadic with their hours and coverage and stuff. It's like.
I haven't even seen, other than state police, I don't see sheriff in.
Really? I just saw one yesterday morning. Was it yesterday?
Here in town?
Yeah.
Not just driving through, I mean, actually.
No, going down the street, yeah.
Well, yeah, I haven't. The state police are down, you know, on South Street regularly.
Right.
Or pulled off along the side of the road there. Um, but I haven't seen Rutland County for a while.
And their shifts are very short. When you look at the hours in the sheriff's report, you'll see their proctor shifts are, you know, hour and a half, hour and three quarters, two hours. So.
Yeah.
You know, the, the chances of you seeing them are certainly slim.
Yeah, I know. Like I told you last time, they had an officer who was out because he was injured. Um, and I know they're short. So.
Well, maybe we could call. It would certainly be nice just to see that. So.
Yeah, maybe watch out for people not stopping at stop signs.
Yeah.
There's a lot of people running.
Oh, I know.
Yeah.
Well, I had a complaint about Meadow Street. You know, coming off Gorm Bridge to Meadow up north and vice versa, coming down and going across and
Yeah.
they just kind of use it as a, they speed up the hill, they speed down the hill. And so they asked about, you know, speed bumps. They are putting speed bumps in um, as they turn. And, you know, it's, it's not like they're not allowed. They are, but you have to get V trans to approve them and that's, they do a study first. So we know what that takes. You know, by next year, maybe they'll be study complete. So I'm looking at the possibility of getting a sign down there again and also one on Pittsburgh and.
Oh, like we have here.
Yeah, yeah. Even if it's just temporary, just something to kind of.
The sheriff one?
Yeah, just something to make them aware as nobody, they don't pay attention.
Yeah.
You know, people still don't stop over here by the library going up to.
Right. Oh, I know. Or even at the five way.
Holden.
At the five way, they breeze right through if they don't see cars. So.
Well, and I think that's why it's good for them to be out and if the sheriff could be around in the afternoon because you're going to have a lot of kids driving from school the first day. Um, so just that presence can make a difference. So I don't think it would, if we ask them now, we ask very little of them.
I know. I pretty much email them every day.
All right, tell me manager's report.
So I included it in your packet this time because they're gonna get a jump on it. So the sidewalks should be done by next week completed. And we're doing a walkthrough with the engineers. We're setting, we sent a tentative date of Tuesday, I think, morning. And then I'm meeting with the project manager tomorrow morning to go over there and look at some of the complaints that we've had. So.
Complaints from people that live there or just complaints from?
Yeah, actually just one person.
But they live in that area?
They live on, on the street.
Sure, okay.
Um, we have other complaints about people, but that's just.
Complaints about people?
No, complaints about the way it looks or how it's been done.
No, but I, I, yeah.
Um, okay, like I mentioned, next week's the next concert with the Green Brothers Band. Um, mosquito district is keeping me updated with all the meetings and agendas and everything. And I know you guys have a meeting Wednesday.
Right, this week.
So I don't know if you have any people interested in physicians or?
No, not at the last meeting.
Okay.
And so till you have people, we can't get any of that data that we asked for or how's that work?
Yes, the Proctor East was not completed the first week. Yeah.
Okay.
I don't know if it wasn't started or if it got started and wasn't completed, but uh, the operations coordinator told me that. Yeah, it wasn't completed. And then the OCW website under pest surveillance, uh, that will put you into a table that has the trap locations, the dates and the counts. So from that one webpage, you can get that information.
Okay, that's good to know. Thank you.
And then the other one, you know, was about the rebates.
Yeah.
In that, you know, OCW is a union municipal district. You know, they set up a budget just the same way the town sets up a budget, you know, unified school districts set up budgets. They look at, you know, what they've done in the past, what they anticipate on doing and the needs in the future, and they come up with a budget. And then, you know, it's made up of six towns and you could say, well, what are we going to do? How are we going to generate this money for our budget? Charge each town equal portion? And then, you know, they had their discussion years ago and they said, no, they're going to come up with a, you know, formula to calculate based on for, uh, they've got it separated, two categories, the larva uh, stage and the adult mosquito stage. And they said, okay, what's the mileage that we spray for mosquitoes in each one of these towns? And they plunk that information into a formula. And then they come up with, based on how much time is spent in your town, that's the portion that you're going to pay of the budget. And they do the same thing with the larva control. They look at, you know, areas that got to be treated. Uh, put it into a formula and come up with uh, the, the percentage of the budget that you're going to pay for the larva site. You know, then, uh, there's six towns and we all pay different amounts. I could pull out the budget if you want and tell you what they are. The law may be Goshen. They may pay eight thousand, but I think the next law is Proctor. Uh, what they pay, Brandon's the highest. But again, it's because of the areas they spray, you know, and as far as, you know.
If they're not spraying.
But if they're not spraying, yes, it's just like if the town's not spreading sour or not plowing. You know, that stays into the budget. You know, there are some times you can move it to different line items. Other times you can't. And, and that's what they'll do. They'll have a surplus and, you know, this week we may not spray. We missed out on Proctor because it was raining and next week it may be Brandon, the following week it may be another town. So, you know, you kind of hope that things balance out. Do, do they keep records? Yes, they keep records of who wasn't sprayed. But in, at the end of the year, uh, you know, if you have a surplus, well, I think the consensus of the board is going to be to try and apply that to an area that you have a need for. Or, you know, I, I, I don't know if we would carry it to the next year.
Well, that should, that should be defined in your bylaws, what you're doing with your surplus. That shouldn't be defined just by a board. And just like a unified school district, if, if we have, we contract out and so you have bill backs or you have, you know.
But we're not contracting out. We're part out. We used to contract.
Well, we're the same. It's, you're with the SU. So, and so you get money back. If you don't expend it, it's based on a budget also. So, I, I just, they've sprayed us one time. Do we do larvicide? Have, have they done that here for us?
Then Proctor, I don't believe they have because we didn't have the numbers. We didn't meet the numbers. But, but again, that is, uh,
I guess I would feel better, one, if you had a surplus, then I think the surplus should go for to the, the, the surplus should roll forward unless it is defined in your bylaws that you can take money and put it someplace. Just like here. If we have a surplus, we can't play with the surplus anywhere we want. Highway goes to highway, the rest of the surplus.
Right, yeah, right. We could keep that in those areas, but do you automatically say, let's give it back to the voters?
Well, that's the question. And that should have been defined in the bylaws of that, what you're going to do with the surplus. So that, that, that.
I'm not saying we have a surplus.
Well, I mean, we've been, we've been sprayed one time and we're in, end of August here. So.
Have you got a copy of the bylaws?
I have.
Well, they're probably on the website.
It might be. But I guess my, my concern is it's kind of like, I, I look at the way Lisa does and especially because they, they separate each town. And they budget each town differently. So they've come to Proctor once.
Well, no, they, they, the only reason it's budgeted differently is because they use a formula to calculate what portion of the budget that town is going to pay for.
Right, right. So, but what I'm saying, it's separated. So it's not one big lump sum that says, everybody, you know, if we spray five towns, we spray one town, everyone's paying the same. We're, we're paying a specific amount and they've sprayed once. And in that budget, they calculated that seventeen thousand based on the mileage, the spraying, the chemicals, all that. So.
That's only one portion of that.
Right, right. But they're not utilizing either of those. So there is a chunk of money that we've paid in that we're not getting any service for.
But bear in mind too, now Proctor is the furthest distance. We have one garage that houses all the operation. That's in Brandon. Now, why should Brandon pay for the spray trucks to come to Proctor?
We're paying for that. We're, we're paying for the maintenance when we, we bought into the district this last year.
But we don't pay for the distance traveled from Brandon to our first spray route. That is absorbed by all the towns. That was again, the discussion we had and they said, no, let's make that a, a district cost. Coming from Brandon to Proctor. Because see, if you're in Brandon, you're right there. You don't have to pay any time or travel distance. And why should, because Brandon houses the garage and Proctor doesn't? Why should we pay more for them to come from Brandon to Proctor? You know, it's twenty-five minutes coming, twenty-five minutes going back, you know? Why should we have to pay for that? Well, the, 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 the board agrees that yes, that should be a district cost. So all we're doing is paying for the time that they are actually spraying. You know, but it's not the travel. And then again, that travel time is picked up by the district. And, and that's the same thing, you know, if you're spraying one town and you miss another, and then well, the next time that town gets missed and you know, this town gets sprayed, you know, if it balances out, probably not, you know, but, uh.
I, we're paying a lot of money. We're, we're buying into a district and we've seen them.
Yes.
And we haven't even seen one full time. And to me, I don't feel like right now that this district has a good grasp on what's going on. It seems pretty dysfunctional in my opinion. And you came and told us, you sent us an email, we read it in the paper. People can't even get together and come up with, with a board to move forward.
Hopefully after Wednesday, we can change that and say that yes, there is a board.
Sure.
I've been dealing with, with mosquito district, kind of, kind of, you know, kind of a liaison between the various towns in the district. The mosquito district itself and the agency of agriculture. There are absolutely two different things going on here. Larvicide is only done where it's needed. They test pools all over their district. So you may not need larvicide in this town. Because larvicide is paid for by the state. The district receives a state grant. It's matched by required mosquito district lists. Ten thousand dollars match and then they get, get the match and services. Uh, it's not a cash max. It's an, it's an in-time match of the district. But the towns are paying for this is adulticide. And, and our, like, correct me if I'm wrong here, but they can only spray adulticide if your mosquito pool pesting indicates that you would need to spray. We can't just arbitrarily.
No, I understand that. But, but we, we are paying to, to, to buy into this, a substantial number. And, you know, I, I don't like hearing then, well, if we have a surplus, well, maybe we'll just put it over here. Well, that needs to be, you well know, that should be defined by your bylaws.
This is, this is, this is how it works.
No, 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 we.
You don't have, maybe.
We know that. We, we've had that explained to us several, several times.
That, that's why we wanted, knowing that you can go online and see that now, that's helpful. We wanted to know where that data was and we had asked for that. So now, now, knowing that's online i- is good.
And it's not their fault there's no mosquitoes.
A very complicated process.
Sure.
With the agency of agriculture to allow them to even spray.
Yeah.
Yep.
Larvicide is, is, is another whole issue.
Right.
Much more easily defined because it's done by testing pools. Uh, adulticide is much more controversial piece. And the, the surplus budget is obviously, I'm not arguing, and I don't want to.
No, 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 I don't want to argue.
The sur- surplus is how they handle that. It's not certainly, I mean, it's between you and, and the district.
Right.
I'm just trying to offer some clarity on how, how, uh, that is all, all the money goes together.
Yeah, no, we, we've been asked.
Also span.
Yeah.
I can tell you how it all comes together.
Yeah, it's just, we had been asked about where the testing sites were and, and all of that. Knowing now that this is online and we can share that, I think that's helpful for people to know that they can go on. People sign up for, so they know when they're coming to spray anyway. So people in town are, you know, know how to get to the website and like that. It's just, you know, I, I think, I'll say, I thought when they came and they, you know, it was like, we need to take a vote and either you're going to kind of buy into the district or we're not going to spray you anymore. It seemed like that was that, that was the way it was proposed. And now we've, you know, said we're, we voted and the town voted and they wanted to buy in. It's just, you know, it's an expenditure when you're not getting anything in return. And listen, I'm happy we don't have mosquitoes. However, you know, there has to be, you know, some kind of, you know, return also on, on your funds. So.
And the OCW is based on the calendar fiscal year. So we're going to start, or they're going to start, I think, in Wednesday's meeting, they hope to organize the committee to help prepare the budget for the coming year. And that could be something that is addressed, you know, about the, the possibility of keeping track of, or they keep track of where it is sprayed and isn't sprayed and see if there could be some type of credit applied somewhere. You know, if it could be carried over to the following year for that community's, that municipality's allocation, well then, so be it. It could be an item of discussion.
Yeah, they, they came up, they have a new uh, gentleman that's the head of this that came up from Florida. And of course, he's used to having all kinds of money, uh, no questions asked. And he's made it a little more difficult. They don't want us to change, keep changing when, when you spray. They want us to be on a, a schedule. If the count is there, fine. They, they want to spray certain towns there because if you start changing that all around, it confuses the state. And they want daily reports now. They used to just come around and check it. And they're watching the district like you wouldn't believe. And we have to.
That may be an understatement.
Yes, yeah. Yeah. And then they, in the contract that we just okayed the other night, they're going to pay the invoices on the day it was received. And nobody know, in common sense, that isn't going to happen. It's got to go to ag department. It's got to go to this department. It's got to go to two or three departments. So, yes, we get the seventy thousand dollars, but the strings that are attached to that is unbelievable.
It is done very carefully.
Yeah. It's, it's hard to comply with the state.
About what you do, what you do with surpluses of the US.
Oh, yeah, yeah. Yeah.
So by November, you should know, I mean, you should be closing out the books for your fiscal year.
I would say yes.
Yeah, I think we approved the new budget, I think in January, February. But we've got to have some time to. The finance committee's got to kind of put something together, then it'll go to the board. And it'll fluctuate and then it'll go back and.
But you said you, they live on a calendar year.
Yes, that's our fiscal year.
Yeah.
So their their budget will have to be in place by December. If I'm starting a new year, I need to have a budget before I start that year. Okay, all right, well.
Let's see how we do.
Okay, some of these things I mentioned already in the meeting, so I'm just going to skip over them. Um, I've had complaints about Beaver Pond Road. Albert.
No, I was just trying to say, because I was only going to ask you about the, uh, end of summer party.
Yeah.
What was the date on that? That was the item before the.
It's the eighteen.
The six, no.
Eighteen.
Eighteen, yeah, the eighteen, yeah.
Okay. Sorry.
The pool is sixteen.
So I've had complaints on Beaver Pond Road about dirt bikes and four-wheelers, um, going up and down the road. There on by the swimming areas. Um, I know a lot of four-wheelers park there and go up in the mountain, but I guess they've been racing up and down first, and then they go up on the mountain. So I had complaints about that. Had complaints about suspicious vehicles on that side. Um, there was one car down at the picnic area too, that someone had concerns about the person in it. Um, but they finally did leave, so, um, I've notified the sheriff every time something happens. And told them to try to take more drive-bys there. Um, some of it's happening more like late at night, you know, some is like early evening, so. Um, met with Lisa from the library and Linda from the high school regarding the installation of a storybook trail behind the high school. Which the school received grant funding for. So it sounded like a really neat project and, um, I think it, Lisa wants to add any details to it or?
Um, it's just, it, we have an outdoor classroom at school, and so they would be the ones putting it up. And, um, we talked about the books they would select. And when school, once school starts, Linda's going to have them, um, kind of lay out where the, um. The post would be, because once it's, they're put in and put up there, that's where they're living. So they'll put it out like with little flags and then invite us over and, uh, walk us through it to see what it's going to look like. So, um, because it should be so it's accessible if you have a stroller or something like that. So, um, but once, um, they have that all set up, um, Linda will contact myself or Judy and. And, uh, we can go over and the kids can walk us through it and and you can make comments on it. But, yeah, uh, everything we received, um, Linda wrote a grant. And then, um, we'll be able to switch it out. We talked about doing it like maybe three times a year or something like that. So we do a story, and then maybe the next one we would do would be something like, um, some aspect of Proctor. About the history of Proctor or something like that, then go back and do a story, so.
Thank you. Um, let's see. Okay, I mentioned the wastewater treatment, uh, pre-designed draft. The asset management report for the water system has been finalized, so we should be getting that report. Um, I reached out to Bigfoot Ventures, both concerns of sixty-one Main Street. Um, I contacted them and mentioned to them that the, um, rock area and that whole ledge needs a attention. And that if not, if we have to hire somebody, that it's going to end up being, they're going to be billed and invoiced for it. And eventually a lien could be placed on that property. So I also did talk to their maintenance, um, crew that does all their mowing. And they do some of that, um, it's, uh, construction work and stuff. So he said he would take a look at the ledge to see what recommendation he has. And they get back to me as well as to them to get some idea. There was a tree down from the woods down into the old fire department area, and they've, they took care of that today, so that's fine.
And what about, um, the rocks like along the, up by the school and Lutheran Church?
That's the church's responsibility.
Okay.
So I have to find a contact for the church.
Okay.
To see about removing that, about Lutheran Church.
Yeah, okay.
Yeah, they did. We'll check that. Um, I had someone come in last week to give me an estimate on the replacement windows for this building.
Great.
So I'm still waiting for that, so.
All right, so we should have that in place to do then for for January?
For January, yeah.
Yeah, okay, that would be great.
Uh, I mentioned about the radar signs. Uh, let's see. Okay, I had a manager managers meeting at Rutland Regional Planning Commission last week. Um, everybody talked about major concerns about the town, the weather, projects taking place. And also, they discussed, Tom, the potential of sharing people across, um, town to town for certain positions. You know, um, like an example, like say, uh, a zoning inspector, you know, what could we do, having one person hired and shared? And the Rutland Regional Planning Commission would actually be the, um, organizer of that and go through the whole, um, res- uh. Threading of who the people were interested in, hiring them, keeping data on their rates, their time and stuff like that. But they would be utilized for whatever town's bought into it. So it was just a suggestion out there for us to come up with ideas and positions that we might be able to.
Great idea.
I think it's a, yeah.
Better utilize.
Well, I think it provides a little more uniformity.
Right, and plus they would do all the vetting, you know, so it's kind of nice. They find the best, you know, people and stuff.
It's hard for people to come in and just, you know, be up to speed.
Right, right.
The person we had before, that was kind of like, they were retired, that, so it wasn't, but to have a job and do this or. You know, have a family, young family, it makes it.
Yep, definitely.
It's a little more difficult, so I think that's a fabulous idea.
Keep you posted on that. Um. Oh, reaching out to a couple other options for assistance in funding the wastewater treatment facility upgrades. So looking at, um, a- actually at that meeting, they gave me a couple suggestions to, to try to get further grants and things like that to help fund that.
They use the flooding money, then what do you give us?
Well, you know, we talked about that, and they push and push and push and say, there's all this FEMA and flooding money.
Yeah.
You've got to have something, you've got to have something in your town that's going to use this money, you know, like.
Yeah.
And most of it is for hazard mitigation, so it's, wh- what do you have in your town that possibly could use this funding to prevent future flooding? But like, you know, one of the people said, these poor people who have nothing, just give the funds to them. They've already had the loss. They've had, you know.
They don't want to help them.
So, um, we were saying, we wish it was more funding for other projects instead of just the flood, you know, the flooding and stuff like that. Um, you know, and and I think even though you could make it as, you know, convoluted as possible. But like the wastewater treatment facility, you know, if there were a major flood, this is one area that's needs really to be, you know.
Yeah.
Improved and things like that, so, um.
Yeah.
And then we had the tri-town path meeting, um, last week with Wes Rutland and Pittsburgh and myself. And we're looking to try to coordinate to meet with Omia. Because a lot of the paths that they chosen or properties are Omia property. And we didn't want to get to the point we did last time with the other bike path, that everything's a go. And then all of a sudden, Omia says, no, we don't want a bike path through here.
Right.
So, um, but these are more like, you know, on the outskirts of town, like, you know, the mountains, stuff like that. You know, on the rails. So we're going to try to see if there's any, um, chance of getting and having that conversation with them, so.
And then, I mean, this project, I mean, this project's still a ways, but when he was here before, they didn't want to talk about. But would it still be like, um, a tri, um, consortium, I guess, for the upkeep of the trails? Because it seemed like when we read the survey, or at least what came out of here, most people wanted like the soft trail. But that requires some kind of maintenance on it, or would you be required for the maintenance on the trails that are in your town? Or that's like so far in the weeds, you're not there yet.
Right, yeah, pretty much it is. But it depends, again, how, what trails, how we do the trails, what the maintenance would look like, you know? Um, I I think one of the best things is is that we can use like snowmobile trails. Because the snowmobile clubs really maintain those paths well.
Yeah.
Um, you know, and we wouldn't be riding bikes and, you know, in the wintertime and stuff like that, so. And that's the majority of people were looking at bike riding. That was the biggest consensus that they would use.
Like when we did it here, so, okay.
So once we all got together, then Stantec is going to kind of look at it and refine it more to those certain areas we talked about. We're trying to keep people off the roads if we can.
Sure.
Especially, like I said, no way, like from, you know, Stevens Road to Pittsburgh Route Three, that's, that's just not a good road.
Yeah.
To ride on and stuff, you know, Route Three here's fine, you've got the big shoulder and stuff, but. So they're looking at the old rails and things like that.
Well, we'll be interested to hear what Omia says.
Yeah, I know.
Yeah, I saw the dollar amount on that, so. We're paying the whole thing and then we're getting.
Well, we're paying only the match.
Yeah.
Yeah, we're paying the match. And then, yeah, I talked to Celia about the best way to do that, so that every time we get a bill, we don't invoice Pittsburgh and West. So she, I think she's just going to do the match and then disperse it to Pittsburgh, West Rutland for their share.
Just wanted to make sure that it changed.
Okay, anything else? Any questions for Judy? All right.
Did you want to do page two?
Huh? We did, we did too.
Going off a few bids and.
Oh.
Voting and.
We talked about road.
Yeah.
Yeah.
So I am going out to, um, try and send out, um, few bids tomorrow. So which is about a month ahead of last year's. And then auditors are also here next week, the twentieth and the twenty-first. And voting is tomorrow again, just so I remember. Anybody wants to work the polls?
All right, uh, old business, West Street. So we're on the calendar for September thirtieth, so, okay, and, uh.
And I did get a phone call from the resident, not the owner, the resident from that. Um, it wa- I couldn't hear her because she was on her cell and it just, she sounded like she was underwater and it just kept breaking up. So she never called me back. She, she said that her neighbor told her we were texting the house and that we're getting rid of it and all this stuff. And I said, you know, that's not the case. We've had this conversation. I sent you the letter, read the letter, the letter outlines and lays out everything.
Well, we do want it cleaned up, so.
Oh, definitely.
That respect, I guess, getting rid of the house, sure.
Deadlines that were in the letter.
Yeah.
And she was supposed to call me back, but she never did, so.
Okay. So I just think that, you know, so they're coming the thirtieth, so what did they say, two to three days, depending if they get in there.
Depends on what they find when they go in the oil tank, if they need more than one drum, you know, what that looks like. He said it could be done easy, probably two days, but it could be a week. And I said, I just wanted it done soon enough so that we give them time to clean it up before the snow falls.
Right, right. So I just think it's really important for us to hold to those numbers that, dates that were in that letter. Because this has been going on for.
Yeah.
Far too long. So, and now that we're financially invested in it. All right, anything else? Any new business, Albert?
Yes, a new business. That storm drain at the exit of, uh, parking lot from Terrace Rios. You know, that's collapsing in on itself. You know, it's probably sixteen inches deep, maybe not quite that much, maybe fourteen inches deep. You know, I don't know if, before we do the paving, if Kyle could take a look at that one.
Okay.
You know, just to see if there's something that should be done.
Right.
You know, because it is so deep.
At the exit of?
Yeah, at the exit, you know, it's on, it's on the travel portion of, travel portion of Main Street. But it's right there at the exit. You can see that it's, you know, caving in.
Yep.
And then the only other area, you know, because we're going to be paving in the area.
Yeah.
And I walked it so many times, the five-way intersection.
Yeah.
You know, when there's a heavy rain, all the material comes down North Street and it, uh, goes across, uh, High Street.
Sure.
And there's a storm drain there, and it doesn't always go into the storm drain, you know, and the, it goes out onto Main Street. And then, you know, D P W has to go up there and clean, you know, the gravel up out of those streets.
Yeah.
It's on a pretty regular basis that they have to clean that gravel. Now, that's probably, that needs some engineering sometime, because the house that had the fire, they have a catch basin in their yard. But none of the water goes to that catch basin, and they're very little. It all crosses in front of North Street.
Sure.
And before the catch basin on that lawn, there's a sinkhole that now has opened up. That's probably five inches in diameter. I don't know how deep it goes. I don't know what's going on there. But maybe if Kyle could just, you know, take a look and he could probably, you know, mention about.
Well, I know they've been checking those up along that road on North Street, so I'll double check to see if he found anything there or what he might know.
But those catch basins are that one that's on the lawn is ineffective. And, you know, in the wintertime, uh, you know, there's a lot of moisture water at the end of Main Street sidewalk. And that's pretty treacherous in the wintertime. You know, they just can't keep up with the ice. You've got a tiptoe going across. And that's again, just because, you know, the water off North Street comes across the end of High Street and, uh, a pool is there. You know, so if if, because we're going to be paving in the area, it may be a good time just to take a look at it and see.
Yeah, they did some work there. I don't know if you saw the drainage on North Street.
Yeah.
Um, that leads down into Franklin's. They did that because it was going over across the road there too. The whole area seems to be.
Yeah.
Yeah. And could you have Kyle look at, see if we can do something up on Orange Bee and Warner? Those holes in the road up there that could use a little. Little care, maybe some patching.
Did they do the potholes like along church and like that or, okay? I didn't know someone else, if they hired that up, okay.
And people are going up the hill and they're over in the other lane because it's so bad on the inside. Edge of the road, right out there by John's ease, really.
And if they did the pothole patching by the tennis court on Park Street, they did a good-looking job there. That looks good.
Yeah, they were doing patch work, what, a week ago, two weeks ago?
Yeah.
It looks good.
They did a nice job up here in church.
Okay.
Sure, yep, thank you.
All right. Any other public comment before we move into executive session? No, all right. I find that premature knowledge, public knowledge regarding the town's status with Zion growers would clearly place town in a substantial disaversion. Because the select board risks disclosing its strategy if it discusses the proposed terms in public. A motion would be in order to enter into executive session to discuss the town's status with Zion growers under provisions of Title One, Section. Three thirteen A, one A of the Vermont statutes.
So moved second.
All of those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? All right, we'll enter executive session at seven thirty.